P M. For the purposes of this meeting, there is a quorum of the council present. The invocation will be given by Mr. Gene Anderson and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilman Hughes. Please rise.
May we pray. Heavenly Father, as always, we're thankful for your many blessings upon our lives, upon the city and state and the nation. And we just pray for your continued guidance and direction, Father, for we know not always what we need to do or how we should do it. But Father, you have all wisdom and understanding, and so we put our faith and trust in you. We ask that you forgive us where we failed you and lead us tonight, for asking in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. The next item on the agenda is the Citizens Forum. Persons desiring to address the council must limit their presentation to no more than two minutes. Unless an item is posted on the agenda, the Texas Open Meetings Act prohibits the council from responding to any comments other than to refer to a future agenda, to an existing policy, or to a staff person with specific factual information. Claims against the city, city council members or employees, as well as individual personal appeals, are not appropriate for Citizens Forum. If necessary, the city council may convene into executive session under Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code regarding any item on this agenda. The public forum is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council?
May I discuss the fence ordinance later this meeting?
Yes. Yes. Okay, thank you. Seeing none, the public forum is now closed. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the council with such approval applicable to all items appearing on the consent agenda. A council member may request any item be removed from the consent agenda and consider it as a separate item. Does any member wish to remove an item from the agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Hearing a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. That carries six zero. The regular agenda, item number thirteen, is to discuss, continue the public hearing and act on an ordinance considering the petition of Rebecca Harrelson, Executress of George Genison Estate for a change in zoning from a one-family dwelling district number two, S F two, to an office district O in the Morningside Estates, Block P, Lot three, L C A D, one three four four one, located in the eight hundred block of southeast Thirty-Eighth Street. And Mr. Mack, would you please do the staff presentation?
Thank you, Members of the Council.
Motion to get it on?
Oh, yes, we do. Thank you, Ms. Knox.
Make a motion to untable this agenda item.
Second?
Yep, second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now, Mr. Mack, thank you for waiting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just very briefly, we've placed this back on your agenda so that you will be able to take formal action, reopen the public hearing this evening, take any comments if that may exist from the neighborhood. And then what staff is recommending that you do this evening is to refer this item back to the Planning Commission for further deliberation. The reason for that recommendation is that during your last meeting, you took public input and testimony during the Citizen Forum. You weren't able to take any action on that. And some of the consensus that was arrived at during your discussion on some of the comments indicated that you would like to take a closer look at the uses in the regulations contained in the office district. Given the fact that making any changes to that zoning regulation would have to go through a formal public hearing process, beginning with the Planning Commission, it's staff's recommendation that you hold off on taking any action on this request and refer it back to the Planning Commission, given the fact that the further review of this request will be potentially under different circumstances if they return a recommendation to you to amend the regulations of that district. And since it pertains directly to the application that's before you, it could result in a different review and a different analysis. Also, the Planning Commission had no public input of any sort during the hearing that they conducted when they provided the recommendation for approval. Since there's been significant interest in this matter to the council, that would give them a different opportunity to review. And in the event that this continues to move forward with the request, would offer them the opportunity to hold a new hearing based on any changes that they may want to consider recommending on a separate agenda item pertaining to the district regulations. So it's with that understanding and also with the full knowledge and discussion that I held with the applicant last week and was supportive of this procedural measure recommendation from the staff to the council. So with that, I'll try to answer any further questions.
Any questions for Mr. Mack?
So when something like this happens, when there's a zoning application, zoning change application or something like that, people in the vicinity are notified, right?
Correct.
So when we go back to review this again, the zoning board reviews this again, so will the people be re notified that this hearing would be held? You know, because people in the community need to be able to come up and state their opinions.
Exactly. And that's why any new hearing that would be held on this before any further action, we would follow that exact procedure so that they do have that notification and do have the opportunity to speak and be heard.
Any other questions, Mr. Mack? All right, I'll declare the public hearing open if there is anyone wishing to speak. Go ahead. Please state your name and address.
My name is Cal Reeve. I'm at thirty-seven sixty Dawn Drive. That property is directly behind my house, and I just want to make the council aware that me and my partner, which is Ryan Adamson, we currently have a contract, and we're set to close on the eleventh of next month. I just, I talked to Vic Restler today. I just want to make y'all aware of that. So I'll be coming to you guys for probably replating eventually, but just to make y'all aware of that. So it's all right. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Coles?
My name's Ken Coles. I live at thirty-nine thirty-five Brandon Place in Morningside. And sir, I was not notified of that meeting. And maybe because I live farther than two hundred feet, I think is the requirement. I live just outside that distance. I think there's probably only ten houses within that standard. I'm against that proposal because I don't know how they're going to build that. Are they going to have access to the loop, or they're going to have to come in through Morningside Drive or Dawn Drive on that? That's a question I'd like to know in two, is how are they going to do dumpsters in that? Are they going to hide them some way, or they're going to be exposed in the area? We're getting a lot of noise traffic from the highway. We're getting a lot of traffic in the area, and we don't necessarily need more traffic coming in the Morningside Drive because this is a residential area and is a quiet area. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
My name is Larry Shank. I reside at thirty-seven sixty-five Dawn Drive. I share the gentleman's sentiments that just spoke to you, but I think we're aware that hopefully this will be resolved without you having to make a difficult decision, thanks to the efforts of Mr. Reeve and his partner. So anyway, I just want to tell you that I appreciate your patience with this matter. Fortunately, I won't be here unless, for a couple of months, if the P and Z takes this up. But I'm sure there are other citizens here who can speak to the issue just as well. So again, thank you very much for your patience. I don't think the zoning as proposed would have been a good change, and that's why we started this process. Thank you.
Thank you. You've been helpful. Any further speakers? All right, I declare the public hearing closed with no further comments being made. Counsel, do I have a motion to refer this item back to the Planning Commission for further review and consideration as the staff has recommended?
I'll make the motion that we send it back to P and Z for a further review.
Thank you. Two seconds? All right. We have a motion to refer this back to the Planning Commission for further review. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Covers, calls six oh, and we wish good luck on that closing. Item number fourteen, discuss, conduct a public hearing and act on an ordinance regarding the petition of Mary Lawrence for a change in zoning from a commercial district C to a one-family dwelling district number three, S F three, in the City of Paris, Block one hundred dash A, Lot five, L C A D, one five five one four, located at ten forty-nine Northwest Seventh Street. Mr. Mack?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Members of Council. This request is for rezoning from commercial district to one-family dwelling district, S F three, to permit construction of a new single-family home under the home program. It was reviewed by the Planning Commission, and they did make a recommendation that this item be approved.
Okay. I will open the public hearing. Anyone willing to speak for or against may come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there any questions of Mr. Mack?
No, I don't have any.
Okay. Do I hear a motion for this zoning change?
Make a motion to change Mary Lawrence's zoning from commercial district to a one-family dwelling district number three in the City of Paris, Block one hundred A, Lot five, L C A D, number one five five one four.
Okay.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the zoning change, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion passes six oh. Item number fifteen, discuss and provide direction on the city's fence regulation ordinance, ordinance number two thousand eight dash zero zero eight. And Mr. Mack, it's you again.
Looks like it's my item in Earl here. Thank you again, Madam Chair, Members of Council. At your last meeting, you had substantial dialogue and citizen input. And at that time, you had asked staff to bring this item back and place it on your agenda for discussion. I have prepared a kind of a three-page memo, a primer, if you will, about fence regulations and taking out what I felt was the three principal areas of concern. It should be pointed out that back in, in two thousand eight, there was a substantial effort by the community with three council members and nineteen or so citizens that, excuse me, fourteen citizens, to revamp, rewrite the fence code and regulations. And based upon that and my review of the regulations that stand in the books as of today, it was my sense that you don't need to open the book and completely review and discharge other portions of it and consider redoing all of the regulations. So what I did is I feel I boiled it down into the three principal areas that I think would be appropriate for the council to focus on. And those three particular areas have to do with whether or not fences should be permitted in the community. Number two, what the fence height requirements are. And that was based on my original analysis, and I've got some further update on that. And then also the principal issue that brought this before the council with substantial citizen concern having to do with the fence facing or the orientation or the, basically, I guess what I would refer to as the finish requirements for how the fence is erected and which direction the posts face and so forth. So as a part of some of this original research that we undertook when we started taking a closer look at this, we conducted some analysis of surrounding communities. And we haven't had a chance to receive all of those regulations. We're still waiting to hear from a few communities. But what I wanted to do was kind of summarize, focused with these three principal areas of the permit requirements, the height and the finish, and tell you what our findings were from about the eight or so communities that we've looked at in terms of focused in just in that one area. And so what I found is that with regard to permit requirements, we found that of these eight communities, three of them are currently requiring permits. Four of them are not requiring permits. And there's one that does not require permits unless the fences go up over six feet in height. Part of the research that I did with our building official was under the residential building code, I C C residential code. Once a fence reaches a height greater than seven feet, there is actual structural analysis for wind loading that has to be provided by the fence contractor. Whether that's been provided or not in the past, I'm not sure, but that is a current requirement under the I C C residential code. And so this one community that's triggering a permit for over six feet in height, I believe, has taken that into account. And I believe it's something we may want to consider. My suggestion is that we take a closer look at the permit requirement, and it may be something that we would like to set aside and make that level of permit application requirements less stringent within the community and sort of reduce the level of regulation, if you will. That's been my experience in a number of communities. One of the reasons why that's a good thing to do is oftentimes residents and neighbors will get in into confrontation about where their property line is, where the fence is being built, and that sort of thing. Typically, it's a responsibility for the neighbors to know where their line is, in particular, the fence, the party that's building the fence and having a directed just to understand and know where the property line is. It's not a responsibility of the city. The minute we go issuing permits for these, we put ourselves in the position of basically condoning the permit, even though it's still clear that that's their responsibility. First of all, it doesn't really state that clearly in our code. I found one community that did clearly state that in their code as a responsibility of the applicant. So it's, and this has been discussed with staff, and there seems to be consensus. I gave you a little bit of an analysis on what kind of permit revenues come in over this since two thousand fourteen. It's not terribly substantial, although we do permit based on the valuation of fences. And as the cost of fence construction has gone up, so goes the increase in the cost of the permit. And so we think that's something that we can suggest that we step back from and make that no longer a permit requirement, except for when that fence rises up over a height of greater than seven feet. Then we are justified by code to do so. The next topic had to do with the height. My initial inclination was that eight-foot-high fences in residential areas is taller than my experience. Coming down in here to Texas, I realize everything's bigger in Texas, particularly compared to Minnesota. So I was surprised to find that of the eight communities I looked at, all eight allowed up to eight-foot-high fences. And the ones without permit requirements then put themselves into a precarious position with the code limiting, you know, requiring that structural analysis. So what I did find, though, is that one of the communities had a restriction to no taller than six feet if it was along a roadway on like a corner lot. So seems like that's maybe something we may want to take into account. But otherwise, I'm essentially backing off on what was in my memo about a concern on fences being too tall in residential districts, just based on the surrounding community's practice. And I don't think the community here in Paris wants to get out in front and more restrictive than what's going on around us. So lastly, when it came to the finishes, it's been my experience that most communities do regulate and require the decorative side of the fence to face outwards. What I was surprised to find out, though, when I did the research of these surrounding codes is that we only had one community that had that requirement. And then we had five, or four that had no requirements falling in that area. And then we had a couple that said yes, but it only had pertain to if it was decorative and in the front yard near the street. We had one that required, that actually, that if the post sides were to face out, then it required that both sides have the same finish. So there's only one community that did that. And then the second community that had that similar requirement was only with the fence is going to go in a commercial district and was going to face a residential neighborhood. So whereas some of the initial inclination from staff looking at this was that probably the way it's written is the appropriate regulation, it's how we administered the stop work order on the case at hand. But after taking a closer look at the surrounding communities, I think that if the council is of the opinion that you would like to look at deregulating that and allowing the finished side to face inward, based on what's going on around Paris, you wouldn't be inconsistent. And it's certainly something that if the council wishes, you certainly could consider directing staff to move in that direction to further eliminate that restriction that would certainly address some of the current concerns that you have before you now on two of the enforcement actions that have recently occurred since just before the last meeting. So what the staff's recommendation is to the council is that you certainly have a dialogue. It looks like you've got some folks that would like to speak to it this evening, that you provide staff with a sense, with some direction of what, if any, changes you would like to have considered. Then we will prepare that into an ordinance format and bring that back to you before a future meeting, whether it be the next meeting or two meetings down the road. We would prepare it as expeditiously as possible and move it forward at that point. So I think I'll stop there and see if you have any questions.
Oh, could you name the communities that you investigated their ordinance?
Yeah, I don't have the list right in front of me. I printed off all the requirements, and some of the cities are on here, some are not. We've looked at, I know we're still waiting on Sulphur Springs to provide us information. We looked at Longview, Greenville, Texarkana was sought out, City of Melissa. So these are some of the ones that I have, and the other ones, I haven't had a chance to put the names with the regulations. And if
That's okay.
If we do take this forward, I will translate this into an actual matrix of communities and list off all their standards, and so it's more clear. So this is just what I could get done basically over the week, since we completed the study just when I finished the staff memo.
Well, I like the idea of doing away with the permitting, except perhaps in the historic district. And if there's a pool, that sort of thing, it has to be a little bit more strict. But it sounds like we're stricter than our neighboring communities, and I would like to see some of the restrictions lifted. There's a photograph that was provided by a fence builder here in town, and it's climb-proof. You can't get a toe-hold on that. If you can see the photograph closely, it's hard to explain, but I've seen it in person, and I didn't try to climb it. But I think that it would curtail anybody trying to get over your fence. And I think my gate's open. If you need it in my backyard, don't hurt yourself climbing my fence.
This is a safety measure, though. When there's something involved, if there was a swimming pool inside this fence and neighbor kid or climbed over, got in the pool, something, okay.
There's also some conflict on swimming pools in terms of state requirements versus the international codes. We would want to err on the side of safety and continue requiring
We would want to err on the side of safety and continue requiring fences around, certainly in-ground pools. If it's an above-ground pool that's four feet in height, tall or taller, then a fence actually isn't required around that, provided that the climbing apparatus into the pool can be removed or secured in some way, so it can't be climbed on, to address safety concerns.
Well, I would support the homeowner that is paying for the fence would get to pick which side of the fence they would want to show from their property, except, of course, the front facing the street, I think, should be the finished side. But if a neighbor wanted to share and ask to use your post, they could put slats on their side and also have a pretty side. My mother and her neighbor did that. But you may have a neighbor who doesn't want to contribute that amount of money. So I think you, in writing the big check, and it's a big check right now with the price of lumber, I think you should be able to pick which side of the fence you see on your fence.
What's the regulations say? Let's say if you had the back of a home that maybe the lot fell off down to, you know, or fell off way lower and the home was higher, could they not build a fence over eight-foot if they wanted to? If we came to, if I built a home somewhere and, you know, I needed a taller fence in the back for privacy, that wasn't affecting anybody? I mean, is that an option? Obviously, it would be a whole lot more construction and that kind of stuff, or is it regulated now that we can't build above eight?
It would be a maximum of eight feet for residential district. We have provisions, you know, if it's a tennis court or if it's an industrial area that it could go taller. But in terms of that, it would be a variance. Or they would have to consider a fence augmented with other forms of landscaping, fast-growing trees, things would produce more.
You could build one taller if you needed to.
Through a variance.
An issue a couple of years ago.
And in the variance, you may use severe topography like that to justify the reason to go taller. I mean, we wouldn't. The applicant would have to make the case for it.
Right. I think deregulate it. I mean, it's, there's, I don't know how many fences in Paris, Texas, that the pretty side or ugly side, whatever, is half and half, almost, what I've seen. More of them, probably, with the poles sticking out. I agree with Ms. Portugal. I think if it's a fence in the front of the house is a decorative thing that probably pointed towards the road, but between you and your neighbor and behind your house, and, I mean, it just doesn't make any sense to me. And if we need a safety measure, by all means.
Well, I agree as well, especially with the, you know, it kind of puts the city in so-so liability, you know, if we have to regulate and give permits on all of the fence, you know, and then you got the property line issues, you have all these issues. So I don't think the city should put themselves in the middle of all that. So I would actually, would support, you know, deregulating any fence under seven feet tall.
Has there been any complaints with the other neighbors, concerns about the fence?
Well, the initial concern and complaint that came in had to do with the height of the fence on the one particular property. And when we went out to check that, we determined that the height requirement was met, that it didn't exceed the maximum height. So whether or not we received all additional comments on the decorative versus the non-decorative side was not the issue. It was the fact that we were out there addressing the concern and knowing that the regulations required a certain orientation, that's why we exercised the enforcement action that we did. So it just didn't meet the code. I don't know that we've gotten a boat full of complaints over the years about which side faces which direction. And I think that based on my research, which I'm surprised, but if the council's direction is to change that requirement, except perhaps with the street facing, then I think that's probably an appropriate action for you to take.
Okay. It's saying that the staff does not support making the change, but then it stated that to double-side both the decorative and the other side facing, so he would have to go back and redo the other side as well?
In the research, we found one community that made that requirement. And based upon the fact that it was the only other one that had that firm requirement like ours, that the decorative side face out, it was my initial suggestion that we'd go in that direction. But based upon my analysis of other communities, I think it's over the top. And it's a greater regulation. It would certainly add a substantial higher amount of cost to this type of fence installation. So that part of my report, I'm actually backing up on that and suggesting that we not make that a requirement at this point.
You had not received all the information at the time. You had to present backup for the meeting, so.
We got this much done for you in two weeks, as best we could.
I wonder why they changed, I wonder why they wrote the ordinance the way they did back in 2008. I wonder if there's any rationale behind that. I mean, if they just did it, then.
I guess, and what's more concerning is the fact that it's been done without enforcement since that time. A number of fences have been permitted since then, quite a few, in fact. The number in the staff report indicates that since 2014, we've permitted 532, and that's a substantial number.
So right now, with our code, if you put the poles on the outside of the fence, okay, you'd be out of code, right? But if you put some kind of wood, like if it was a wood fence, and you put wood covering over the poles that looked just like the fence, I've seen that, would that keep you in code or would that still be out of code? Because the poles wouldn't be showing. So would that work or not?
That's a good question.
I've seen that recently.
Yeah, it's a good question, and I'm not sure I have a good answer for that. That might be determined to be decorative. It's certainly not written in the code currently, the way it speaks.
Yeah, because when I saw it, you really couldn't even tell. When the fence was put up, I saw the metal poles. But later, when they covered it, you couldn't even tell that metal poles were even there. It looked like just part of the fence.
Right. And the reason that those metal poles are put in these tall fences, eight feet in height, that's additional support for wind loading and structural support. It also helps keep the fence up in later years, when some of the wood may start rotting or deteriorating from infestation, and it helps provide additional support. And apparently, that's why they're done that way.
I think we have some guests who would like to ask a question on this. Good evening. If you'd state your name and address, please.
Richard Thompson, 3206 Bonham Street, Paris, Texas. And in light, I'm going to get to this on, in light of the fence ordinance. I know you were here, looking at council members a year ago or a year and a half ago when they went through the codes for building codes and all, put a committee together, and they revised and come along for the building standards, or not building standards, international building codes for mechanical, electrical, and all that, found them okay. What I'm hearing is on these, the city's codes, the building codes are okay, they're international codes. It's like this fence deal, what's right, what's not right, what's national standard, all stems from the fact that the city of Paris kind of needs to update. I'm not saying who's going to volunteer, but this town is operated, generated by a complaint-generated system. If you go out there and build a fence and nobody complains, you're good. You go out there and build a fence, somebody complains, one person complains, you're up here doing what this poor gentleman's doing. That, I think, we need to change, look and change in some of that. The simple fact, you got 30 people on this block, one person complains, so we're going to throw this guy into the bus. I think the 30 ought to have a rule, the one complaint law. And this goes along also, believe it or not, with your, even your city police. You can go, if they're getting called, if they don't like the coding inspectors answer, they call the police. Well, I think the police ought to be able to, after the third or fourth time, charge them for that, you know, call 911 because they're putting a fence post up. But that's the one complaint rule. But I know that we probably could sit down and look at all this. It's like you got one in chapter, what is it, 15100? Any business that's been in, you have no grandfather clause. If this business has been in business for 30 years in this location, one complaint, somebody says, hey, they're not, they're in violation, they gotta, you gotta shut them down. Because they had been in business since 1957 continuously to be considered grandfathered in this town. Most other towns, as this gentleman looked around, I looked around, too, most, all your other cities around here, on your grandfather clause, on your codes, they keep it running 20 years. Okay? So let's say if they've been in business, they've been in this location, they're not, they're not, they never were up to code, they never were legal, but they've been there for 20 years. They're grandfathered in, not 1957. I don't even know of any businesses in town, it's the person that started, that's still alive. So we might want to look at all of this. But it refers back also to this fence, is what we're mainly here tonight for. But the one complaint, that's not real good. And I think the individuals ought to have the choice where they want the good side in or out. I do agree with that. Because I'm going to spend $10,000 on a fence, I want to look at the good side. Or, like me, I might want not turn the good side out for security, as you pointed out. That's a good answer, too. But I think we need to kind of revisit the whole thing on our codes, because there's some stuff in there we could change. Thank you.
Thank you.
James O'Brien, 3150 Bonham Street. Mr. Pogram, I want to commend you on your comment as far as grade. You're very correct. And I think that we need to get creative as we review this ordinance and accounting for the unique landscape architecture we have in Paris. We have a lot of drainage. Y'all heard about the drainage issues that we have because of a lot of the grade that we have here. And I think we need to account for that as we look at this. I think that's really important. I think, as Mr. Thompson mentioned, we need to look into, how are we going to handle this, the current fences as legal non-conforming use? Are we certainly going to go back and cite everybody? Much recently, we had an issue with a sky sign. We know that there's existing sky signs. Have we gone back and are we allowing legal non-conforming use for those? Are we going back and citing everybody and making them take those down? So I think we need to take that into account as we address this. What are we going to do with those that already exist? My personal opinion, as far as it comes to security, is that's not the council's issue. That's the landowner's issue to account for their own home security and how they address that. I think the council should support or should, needs to focus on the minimum. The job of ordinance is to set the minimum standard, and if the homeowner, and especially in this case, wants to increase the value of their home as a fence does, if you look at resale values, a home, a fence with, a home with a fence goes for more money, okay? And I think a homeowner is adding value to their home by putting a nice fence up, and the nicer that they want to make it, that adds value, and that's their decision, again, above the minimum standards. And the pool, I think, is a separate issue. It's a great point. I think it's a safety issue, but there's usually a fence requirement, a fence within a fence for children, as was mentioned earlier. And then I want to challenge the city council to think one more thing beyond this, because I've encountered this at the state level recently, when it comes to privacy. Most of these fences that are being constructed, we're paying tens of thousands of dollars for to add privacy. That's something we value very dearly here in Texas, is our privacy. We don't want people intruding on our privacy, the government or our neighbors. And security cameras have become an issue. And if my neighbor puts a security camera above my six-foot or seven-foot or eight-foot fence, I should have, then have the right to be able to block them out. Don't you think so? So do I have to now have an ordinance or go to the Board of Adjustments to try to get that section of my fence to go be of whatever height I need, including the grades that are there, to maintain my privacy? If I'm paying tens of thousands of dollars for my privacy and it's easily invaded by somebody putting a camera up, for which the police can do nothing, or I spend tens of thousands of dollars going through the court system to get an injunction on that person to try to get it taken down, wouldn't it be easier if we got creative here at this point to try to allow the landowner and homeowner to retain and regain their privacy? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Chaney Bryan, and I reside at 2565 Clark Lane. I wholeheartedly agree that we should always put the pretty side out facing the street. We've done that that way for 21-plus years, and will continue to as well. My concern is if we do start telling people, hey, you've got to pay for this fence and give it to the neighbor, selfishly, I'm going to lose money, you know? And that's how I support my family. And I've talked to numerous people throughout the community, and every one of them has said, I will not do that. I will let my fence fall. I don't care, I'm not going to do it. So, you know, that's concerning, that's something we need to look into. As far as pools go, I have what you call a non-climb rail, and you guys are more than welcome to look at it. But this is what we do in the city of Dallas when we do fences, and it just protects children from being able to climb it like a ladder. You just, there's nowhere to get a grip, you know? So with that being said, I hope you guys will take that in consideration, and hopefully we can move forward. Any questions for you?
Any questions for Mr. Bryan?
Let me think, I have one, lost it.
You want to walk that by us closer?
Absolutely, absolutely. You're welcome to. All it is, we just cut a 45-degree angle on a two-by-four, and that just eliminates the ability to climb that fence. You know, like I say, that's what we do in Dallas, and I'd be more than willing to do that here as well. Yes, I did, absolutely. Thank you.
And you said most, most of your customers want the good side in?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I mean, these fences are so costly right now with lumber prices, I just, I don't see how anybody would want to, or in some cases, even be able to pay to put a double-sided fence up. I mean, we're talking incredibly expensive to do that. I mean, I'd love it. If I could do that every day, that'd be the greatest thing in my life, but it's not realistic. It's really not. Any other questions? We good?
Great input, thank you.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Any more input from the council?
Got one more.
Hello, I'm the original, or I'm the property owner that got this stop-work order, and I think this is an example of it turning into a positive experience, right? We can all learn and maybe go in and reevaluate some of these ordinances that, yeah, technically people are just doing their jobs and they go around and passing out red paper. But let's think about, is there a better approach to that? And how can we better assist people to want to invest in Paris versus Reno or even Melissa, Texas? So, I mean, I think that's something we also need to think about, turning this into a positive experience, where we can all learn to take a new approach to how we observe our ordinances that for, since 2008, we didn't even realize were on the books, but took one person to complain that my fence was too high, to where it became not a fence height issue, but more of a, your pretty side isn't in the right direction, which $7,000 is my own money, I should be able to do what I want. But, so, yeah. I wonder if you guys have any questions for me or anything.
You have your fence, and you're happy now, and?
Yeah, very happy. I was very happy. It's beautiful. Love my fence.
We love happy citizens.
I went by and looked at his fence. You know, I studied the fence, and it took a lot to look for the poles. I mean, it's hidden behind houses and butted up against shrubs and, you know, so it took a lot to look to find the poles. But, you know, I don't have a problem with your fence at all.
And I do agree that the pretty side facing a street frontage should absolutely, the post should, you know, yeah, it's up to the property owner, maybe, but for the aesthetics reasons, maybe if it's facing a street frontage, the post should be on the inside, but it's dividing a property line between two properties. You know, the city constructs fences along the trail that have that issue. If you're dividing a property line, one side's going to have posts visible, especially if there's not a structure in between the two, or if there's not a fence around it. So, yeah, I think that's something that definitely, what really intimidated me was the fact they were looking for something, I guess, and they found something that no one's found before, so. But I think we can turn this into a positive thing. And that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, anyone want to add anything for Mr. Mack? Or do you have any questions? Or do, do you have any questions, Mr. Mack, of the direction we're tilted in?
I think we just need to make sure, we do have the direction we're tilted in, so just put it out for us.
Okay.
I think it's fairly clear, although the, the subject of varying fence heights for privacy or for...
Can you come to the mic, please? Because the, the TV audience cannot hear.
I think I have a pretty clear direction that you'd like to go in this. And I don't think it will take a great deal of work to, to prepare this. Also, I wanted to indicate that any of the stop-work orders during this time that we are relooking the ordinance, we will not, we will not proceed with those until the matter's settled. And if, if it's settled in such a manner that they'll be in compliance after the changes, then, then we'll be, we'll be in good shape. They won't have any further requirements under the city's orders. But until that time, we'll just, we'll hold off or stay any further enforcement action on that basis. The one thing I wasn't real clear on, I heard some comments about privacy, about neighbors' cameras. This type of ordinance doesn't normally address that situation. But if, if there's something you would like us to do to make some sort of an exception or in the case of topography and, and they, they have a much lower area and they don't have the privacy that you feel they need at a, at a, in a unique slope or something, I would maybe like a little more direction there because I don't know that we want to... And, and sometimes those are just good cases for variance. But if you think...
As long as there's a variance in there, I mean, it's, the fence I'm talking about may be 15-foot tall, you know? But it would, it would make sense for that home to have that, because if you walk out on the back porch of a six-foot fence, you can look down at the top of it. You know what I mean? So, to have some kind of privacy structure back there to, you know, but as long as there's a variance, you know?
And that, that variance is built into the ordinance the way it's written currently.
Yeah. I think I'm fine there.
Would, would you have a situation like that in the city limits of Paris?
Yeah. I know where there's four or five right now, and just in my neighborhood, Johnson Woods, that, that they've got some older, I guess those fences are permanent. I'm not going to tell you where they are because I don't want to get in trouble. There, there's, there's a few that are there. I mean, you walk out their back of the house, and I'm like, man, that's a big fence. But, you know, it, to get a six-foot privacy fence, you've got to go up so far, you know, and, I don't know, I just, if we had just had an eight-foot, nobody can build one taller than eight-foot. I just kind of, there's got to be some areas where that can be used, I'm sure, in some other parts of Paris, too.
So, you know, when we start talking about all these variances like that, well, then the camera situation, you know, hey, I've got a seven-foot or a six-and-a-half-foot fence here, and you have a camera up that's pointing over my house, so I ought to be able to raise my fence. Well, then, that's going to add to the city. You know, you're investigating and things like that. Hey, does this meet with our code? You know, you, you have all of these things. I mean, how far can we go and how far will you go? And then, you know, this, you're taking away from the, the point of deregulating the, you know, above seven-foot, I mean, below seven-foot fence, because you're taking weight off the city staff. Well, now, if we come up with all of this, then we're putting it right back on the city staff to investigate all of these issues and things like that, things that really the city staff should not be investigating. But you, if we make ordinances like that and variations, then you're adding to workload of the city staff, because they got to see if it meets this or that. But I'm in favor of, I like these suggestions that you sent and that you discussed earlier, you know, the fence, I can't see, the fence height requirements, fence orientation requirements, and, you know, fence permits. But I think we need to baseline it. I think we need to be consistent, you know? Because when you start being inconsistent, then that's when all the issues start. So, we need to, some kind of way, make, make this thing, this code consistent and stick with it.
I think I'm fairly clear then.
All right. So, what are you going to do? Are you going to rewrite something and then bring it back to us to read?
Yeah. So, procedurally, this is under the Building Code section of the city code. This doesn't need to go to the Planning Commission. So, we'll draft up an ordinance revision. We will schedule it as a public hearing. We'll, we'll get the code amendments completed and then just determine at that point, you know, we need 10 days in advance notice in the paper. We won't notify individual citizens other than through the paper for the public hearing notice and, and take it as a, as a, as a code amendment, as you would normally use to amend the city code.
So, are you going to eliminate the permit process?
Yes.
Okay.
And what I heard was any fence that's seven feet in height or lower, we're going to deregulate for, no, no permit requirement.
All right. And then, what was the other, other issue about the poles? Does it matter which way the poles go?
Except with regard to when it faces the street.
Where it faces the street can be seen from the street or in the front of the house?
The, the, the portion of the lot is directed toward a road right-of-way.
Okay.
So, that would either be the front or side exterior on a corner lot. Not that you can see through the neighbor's lot to the side lot line, and you can see that from the street even, it's only for lots that front the street.
That front the street. Okay. And then, what was the third issue? Was the permit, then it was where the poles go? And, oh, I guess the height. Was that the other issue? Was the height?
That's the only change I'd recommend is a permit requirement if it's higher than seven feet.
Higher than seven. Higher than seven or higher than eight?
Higher than seven.
Okay.
Because that's, that's a ICC code requirement.
Okay.
For structural analysis. And that would be a, a full opaque fence. That wouldn't apply to chain leak or that type of fence, where the air can pass through it.
Okay. I think that sounds fine.
Sounds good to me.
Sounds real good to me.
Me, too.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mack.
Sounds like we're clear. We'll have that ready as soon as we can.
Could I speak briefly?
Yes. Go ahead.
Briefly, since there was a question about how we plan on proceeding forward, I'd like to offer my support along with other members of the, of the city to work directly with the city to provide some suggestions. Specifically, Ms. Knox, you asked about height requirements and regarding cameras. I think I have some suggestions which may benefit you or could help bring some options to the city council for adoption or rejection regarding those issues. I've been dealing with this for a couple of years. Again, I mentioned earlier, briefly, I've, I've spoken with state legislators regarding this, and I've gotten some feedback, and I think maybe we, I could provide some, some options. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 16, discuss and act on an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a solid waste collection permit to Frank Friesen, doing business as Turnkey Dumpster Rental pursuant to Section 16-24 of the Code of Ordinances. And the passage of this ordinance requires five affirmative votes. Ms. Ellis?
Okay. Our code requires that a person or an entity that wants to collect and transport solid waste within the city must obtain a permit. Frank Friesen, owner of Turner, Turnkey Dumpster Rental, has filed an application. He has submitted the required insurance. We are, I can't talk tonight. We are recommending approval of the ordinance authorizing Mr. Friesen a permit. He's been in the county for 30 years. This is his first business to operate in the city. He has one trailer and two dump trailers. He's here tonight if you all have any questions.
Any questions? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to act on this ordinance.
I make a motion that we authorize the issuance of a solid waste collection permit to Mr. Frank Friesen, DBA Turner Key Dumpster Rental.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Carry 6-1.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Item number 17, convene into executive session pursuant to Section 551-087 of the Texas Government Code. One, to discuss or deliberate regarding commercial or financial information that the governmental body has received from a business prospect that the governmental body seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the territory of the governmental body and with which the governmental body is conducting economic development negotiations. Or two, to deliberate the offer of a financial or other incentive to a business prospect described by subdivision one as follows. Project Fast Track. It is six...
Before we go in, you said...
Oh. Correction. Six-O is how that passed. Thank you. It's 627, moving into executive session. It's 6:27, moving into executive session.
I know it, I'm freezing.
My neck is stiff.
I'm so used to, I'm so used to no air conditioning or very little air conditioning.
The council is reconvening into open session at 6:55 and there's no action required. Item number 19, consider and approve future events for city council and/or city staff pursuant to resolution number 2004-081. Anyone have a future item? Ms. Stone?
I don't have a future item, but I would like to congratulate Grayson. He'll be a year tomorrow and he, I know we're not always the easiest people to work with, but we try our best and I just want to give you a round of applause for the great job you're doing.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. Yes, we're glad you're here. I would like to put on an item just to discuss employee evaluations and maybe have volunteers of a committee of three who would look at the month of the year that would be best to do those evaluations and choose evaluation instruments.
City manager, city attorney, city judge?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. All right. Motion for adjournment. And second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You've got a good week.
Well, that one was a little different on table.
Yes.